Okay, welcome to the Budget Workshop. Today is June 7th, 2024. This meeting will now come to order. Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Your Honor, before I call the roll, I would like to announce that Mayor Gunter asks to be excused and I will mark him so. Mayor Pro Tem Long.
Here.
Council members Carr.
Here.
Costin.
Here.
Hayden.
Here.
Shepherd.
Here.
Spanky.
Here.
Welsh.
Here.
Seven Preston and one excused.
Thank you, ma'am. I have here item four is business 4A, the water and sewer rate study, and I'll turn it over to the City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I'm going to have Finance Director Mark Mason and our consultant Andy Burnham give this presentation.
Good morning, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, Mark Mason, Financial Services Director. I'd like to introduce to you Andy Burnham, consultant with Stantec, who had a material hand in preparing this utility revenue sufficiency analysis. Andy has been with Stantec quite a long time, but more importantly, he's been doing the rates for the city of Cape Coral since 2003. So he has a great deal of understanding about both the city, the utility system, as well as the rate structure for us. So, without further ado, Andy?
Thank you, Mark. Good morning, Mayor Pro Tem and council. As Mark indicated, my name's Andy Burnham. I'm a Vice President with Stantec. I lead our management and technology consulting group. And also, as you indicated, I've had the opportunity to work with the city since I started doing this work in Florida back in 2003, so a little over 20 years. So a lot of historical context and knowledge that I can impart and is also as part of the questions and answers provided as well. But I wanted to today really go into where we sit today as opposed to the history. Even though as part of our process, we've been doing annual reviews, these reviews each year on the financial sufficiency of our current rates are predicated on current information, both what we're seeing with existing operating costs, inflationary impacts, as well as our updated capital improvement programs, which we update continuously along with our budgets. And so that's why looking at the financial health of your utility, so to speak, is very important from year to year. It's also important to do that in the context of how do you pay for the capital improvement program? And in 2023, we'd issued debt for the water and sewer infrastructure, about $100 million. An additional debt is on the horizon and is a big part of how we're going to pay for the infrastructure needs that we have for the water and sewer systems over the next five and 10-year forecast periods. And that infrastructure is a really big driver for what we're seeing today. In addition to rising operations and maintenance costs that reflect the inflation that we've seen post-pandemic, that many of us have seen in several different ways, we'll get into that more in detail as part of the discussion. But the capital is a really big driver for us in terms of what our utility rates have to cover. Water and sewer systems by their nature are very infrastructure-intensive, extensive networks of miles of pipe underground that we don't see, as well as the treatment facilities that treat the water that we can drink, as on the other end, treat the effluent or the wastewater, so that we can dispose of it in environmentally safe and regulatory compliant manner. It's that capital program that over the next 10 years is $1.2 billion for the city of Cape Coral. There are some notable projects in there, including expansion, the continuation of the utility expansion program in various areas, but also other key capital improvements, expansion of existing facilities for wellfields, as well as transmission lines associated with those utility expansion areas, in addition to expansions of capacity at our water treatment plants, as well as our water reclamation facilities that treat that wastewater. So there is a significant amount of major capital projects in our CIP for which, again, financing those with debt makes sense, given that they're going to last a long time and serve multiple generations of rate payers. Some historical context here, what we see generally across the U.S. is measured in the National U.S. Consumer Price Index for water and sewage maintenance costs. So that's a reflection of a national average increase in water and sewer rates. And if you look back to 2015, that national average has increased by about 47% over the last 10 years. In the city, we haven't had a rate adjustment until just last year, a 4% increase. Previous to that, there were nine years where it was flat, and actually in 2014, we reduced rates by 3% the year prior to this. So we've been very stable on our utility rates for a long period of time, and that's in large part been because of the growth that we've had in our utility area that's provided additional revenues to the system. But it was also a very stable cost environment for the most part during that time period, consistent levels of inflation, both on operating and capital cost. However, that's been changing on us the last few years, and so being able to continue on this trajectory with current conditions is really no longer sustainable. Where we sit in terms of our current costs for typical households today is very comparable. In fact, for a typical household that uses 4,000 gallons of water per month and also does 20,000 gallons of irrigation, we have the lowest rates in the area by a fairly substantial margin. You can see if I highlighted at the bottom, that current bill is a little over $100 for all three of those services to those levels today, whereas in other communities such as Fort Myers, North Fort, Charlotte County, and Venice, that bill would be over in excess of $300. So we have a very high level of service for a very low price. And I've also identified just some of the forward-looking increases these other agencies are looking at. These have been approved. They could be subject to change in revision, but they are identified by ordinance or resolution for these other agencies as their adopted plans of increases. To give you a sense of where others are trending, so the city of Venice is looking at a future water plant rehabilitation. So they're looking at elevated increases on their water rates at 5 and 1/4% for several years and 3% indexing on wastewater. Collier County, you can see their increased plan that's been approved through '26. Lee County is looking at increases of 8% a year through '28, so getting a little bit closer to home. Fort Myers is looking at 5% per year through 2027, and they're going through an annual update right now in their forecast. So as we kind of move forward in time, it's very reasonable to expect that many of these other agencies, their bills are going to continue to increase each year to deal with many of the same challenges around inflation, capital investment needs, as well as regulatory requirements. Those are really the three big drivers through the industry that we see consistently. So as we look at our system and break this down, the key drivers that we see as we sit here today are really, on the operating cost side, inflation-driven. So we've seen some significant increases in some of our key expenditures or operational components for chemicals, electricity, and fuel. Since 2019, they've gone up almost 100% in that short of a time period. And I'll show you some information about some of those in a moment. The capital program, as I mentioned, it's $1.2 billion over the next 10 years, and we have about $900 million of that funded with debt. And when we did the issuance of the debt in 2023 that I'd mentioned a moment ago, the credit rating agencies, as part of evaluating our credit rating, noted that there are concerns about the level of debt that we have and how we're going to pay for it going forward. And as we add to it with additional capital, that becomes a more important and pressing question. And as that may potentially impact our credit rating, if we don't address that issue, that means higher interest rates on what we do have to borrow, which means our expenses go up, which means the rate would have to go up to support that. So this is a pretty important balance that we have to walk relative to how we pay for our capital sustainably over time. Additionally, as we add those two things together, operational cost and paying for capital primarily with debt, we have to make sure that we have adequate ratios of income, our operating revenues minus operating expenses, to our debt payments each year. They have to at least be equal to, ideally, they have to be greater than, they really have to be greater than, those annual principal and interest payments. And so that's a key metric for us as we go forward, is to make sure they exceed those minimum requirements in our bonds. But on the construction costs and that capital funding, the $1.2 billion is a big number that's recently gotten larger for several reasons. Predominantly in the construction market, we've seen very significant increases recently on key construction materials. So if you look at things like ductile iron, that's gone up significantly. If you look at just the right-hand side of the chart, you see those spikes that have happened post-pandemic around the 2020 period and beyond. And for plastic pipe, we've seen that increase just since 2020 by 100%. And that's a key component for a lot of our underground projects, and so that's doubled. We've also seen, in addition to these material increases with these spikes recently, that haven't come back down, they're staying at elevated levels, increases in the salary or the personnel-related costs associated with construction projects. And so as we go out to bid and we see our projects come in, we're seeing reduced numbers of bidders and elevated prices to account for the inflated costs of construction materials and higher labor costs that the contractors are seeing. And so that's creating even more pressure on our capital improvement program in addition to addressing just the needs for replacing our infrastructure and expanding our system to deal with growth. On the operational cost side, we've seen some very acute increases. We've looked at just the plastic pipe that I mentioned that's gone up over 100% from 2020, but then also the treatment chemicals. We've seen just a 30% increase in those in about a three-year time period. And it's interesting, if you look at some of the trends on these data points, and if we were to have done a forecast on these in 2020 that forecasted those types of increases, I think you would have questioned our credibility. Like, these are unprecedented increases in operating and capital costs, especially in the face of that history. If you look at plastic pipe, those prices were pretty stable for several years. And then overnight, they more than doubled on us because of the pandemic and the attendant impacts from that. So these are things that are just unprecedented. So as we've managed our utility, we've done a good job through the annual revenue sufficiency process of managing our expenses as best we can with our existing resources, but the paradigm's changed on us where we can't sustain the same approach of relying on growth to cover capital and increase in operating costs, because the increases in operating cost and capital cost have just been materially different than what they've been historically. And so we have to account for that in our financial plans today. So when we update our financial model, and this is the forecasting model that's incredibly busy, but we're trying to track several key things. We're trying to look at the three rows in the middle where you see the yellow is our debt coverage ratios, to make sure we're in compliance with the terms of our debt and we don't fall into technical default by not meeting those annual coverage requirements. And if you look at 2024, where it says all-in DSC, it's about the sixth row down, you can see we're at 1.06. That minimum ratio is 1.0. We are very close to the minimum level in 2024 relative to those bond requirements. And if we were to not do these plans of adjustments to at least keep that debt coverage above 1.0, we would immediately in 2025, with this capital plan and these operating costs, fall into technical default on our debt, which means we would automatically have to turn around and raise rates significantly to make sure we meet those requirements. And it would impact our ability to issue debt to secure the funds we need for the capital projects that we want to do. So in this plan we're looking at, we have three years of 11.5% increases forecast and then a return to 5% increases. Those 5% increases were part of the forecast that we looked at last year, but because of the increases in capital costs and operational costs, we have a near-term rate pressure that we have to address to keep our coverage ratios up. Now, putting this into a bit of context, when we do a lot of work throughout Florida, we've worked with about 150 communities throughout Florida doing these types of forecasts, as well as a few hundred across the nation, we're seeing a lot of impacts that are comparable to this and, in fact, slightly higher. So we're having discussions right now with Indian River County as an example, where they're looking at two years of 12% increases on their water rates, a 24% increase on sewer rates, followed by a 12%. We're seeing very acute rate pressure. Hillsborough County just recently approved a stacked rate plan that effectively amounts to 9% a year increases for five years. Fort Lauderdale had a two-year plan of increases approved to fund water plant improvements of 22.5% per year, followed by 9% per year. And so while these percentages may seem large, again, we bring this back to what they're being applied to. So our bill is one of the most affordable in the area, so when we look at applying that increase to our bill, it's basically about a $10 increase on that monthly bill, is what it translates to. And against even others' current rates in 2024, we would still be lower than the next closest, Naples, which is a little over $130 on their monthly bill. So the percentages do seem large. The impact to customers, I don't want to understate. I do realize that $10 can be a significant impact to many households, but putting into context for what hangs in the balance for your critical quality-of-life infrastructure services and understanding it in the context of the marketplace, it's not necessarily as scary as maybe as what it otherwise may seem. And in fact, we're still going to have a very comparable cost for the same services as compared to many communities throughout the area and even across Florida if we were to expand the survey to that level. So in summary, what we're seeing today is that the existing rates and the revenues they generate aren't going to be sufficient for the identified capital improvement program to sustain the phased implementation of the UEP and to cover the debt service requirements associated with funding those capital programs. So we do have a forecast for annual indexing, 11% in '25, 26 in '27, followed by 5% per year thereafter. Again, these are things that we recommend you update annually. So really, the key decision point is not necessarily all of these years of the forecast, but really looking at what's in front of you as you embark upon your next-year budget for fiscal year '25. And that's why we recommend you continue to look at this annually. There maybe could be some positive occurrences and changes in our environment, both economic as well as some of our costs of construction, that maybe could have a positive impact next year. But even that notwithstanding, the bills are going to be very comparable locally to other agencies. And in the context of increases that we see across the state because of many of these same issues and drivers, we're actually in a pretty fortunate place, I think, because of our annual proactive financial management. We're able to manage these impacts to a degree that is reasonable in the context of some of the other increases that we're seeing throughout the state and the country. So with that, I'd be happy to open it up for any sorts of questions and certainly happy to participate in any discussion that you may have.
Great. Thank you, sir. We'll now open it up for a discussion. I see Councilman Spanky.
Thank you, and we appreciate the detailed information. It helps. The, when you mentioned that the availability of debt could be on the decline or accessibility to debt on the decline, just what's the typical duration of the debt that we offer? And have our rates been, have they kept up with the market as it would relate to, you know, interest rates and everything else?
Sure. So the typical financing term that you'll use for revenue bonds has been 30 years, has been the assumption for that. And the interest rate that we have on that for borrowing is 5%, and that's very typical. I mean, double A systems right now might be able to get a little bit less, but we're a single A-rated utility. So the interest rate we're getting for our debt is pretty comparable to other similarly rated utility systems. And then for a portion of the CIP, we are looking to access the State Revolving Fund program through the Department of Environmental Protection, and those loans are typically 20 years, and we've assumed a 2% interest rate on those. So we're looking at using those for certain qualifying projects, maybe some neighborhood pipe replacement programs, certain projects that qualify for that low-interest financing.
Okay, thank you. And the 25 to 27, 11%, that, that in all essence is like a catch-up period, if you would, because of leaving the rates relatively flat for as long as we did, that's kind of helping get us caught up? Would that be safe to assume?
I generally agree with that. I think I'd maybe put a little bit of a context to it to say that, you know, we've felt these increases in cost the last year or two, and they're now very present in our near-term capital plan. And so we haven't adjusted our rates, you know, over the last, you know, decade to keep pace with general inflation, because we've been able to use growth to do that. So we haven't necessarily neglected the system. I wouldn't want to say anything like that. But because of the magnitude of increases in inflation, we have to adjust our revenues up, and we have to do it pretty quickly. So we're trying to spread that out over a three-year period to catch up to that inflation. So I think we're kind of saying the same thing, but I might want to just be careful to say that, you know, we didn't, it's not that we did anything wrong, it's just that the amount of inflation that we have to catch up to over the last two years is very significant. And so this plan tries to spread it out over, along a time period as we can to balance meeting our financial requirements but maintaining affordability for residents and businesses.
Okay, and you had mentioned one other community. I'm not sure which one it was. I didn't get down quick enough, but they chose to do 9% for five years. It sounded like, I don't know if it's Pinellas or...
It was Hillsborough.
Okay. Was a lower increase for a greater period of time considered in your evaluation of our situation as well?
The challenge we had, and we did look at various different options, and this 11% plan was one of the ways that we could try to smooth it out. But if we went lower, what we found is with the current capital plan that we have for the needs in '25 and '26 and the borrowing with that, if we didn't do this increase, then we would fall below those minimum bond requirements that I mentioned. And we'd have a really hard time selling the debt when we're basically not meeting our coverage requirements. They probably wouldn't issue it. So we wouldn't be able to do the capital if we didn't do this level of adjustment is the punchline.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
I guess I'll jump in following that. So it's safe to say, I guess, based on those questions, provide further context, but not for that insurmountable growth, this probably would have had to happen a lot sooner?
I agree. The growth has been a great benefit to the community in terms of the additional revenue it's generated with, you know, minimal increases to our operating cost in particular.
And of course, the vastest is, that's not a sustainable business model, so to speak, as far as counting on that to continue at the rate that it has.
That's right. And with the change in inflation environment.
When we're talking about the 11%, in the context of the first chart that you showed with the annual increases for, I believe, the entire nation?
It's a national average.
With the national average of 47? So then it would be 11 over the three years would get us up closer to being level with that?
It'd get us closer.
As it exists currently?
It'd definitely, it would close that gap. The national average is probably going to go up about 4% to 5%, you know? So we're going to close the gap, but I don't know how much exactly that may be.
Okay. And then one last thing for me is, I'm assuming that it was taken into the context of the number that we ultimately landed on when you said there's sort of two different avenues. One of them is, we raise it just to the level that, I guess, we're able to service the existing debt and sort of not default. And then this, I'm assuming, projects in a little bit of extra buffer so that we don't run into the issues that we're having with future debt with regards to pushing up against that limit and getting some unfavorable rates.
That's correct. We don't want to design rates right to the minimum, because then if something happens, you know, outside of our plans, we have a hurricane that impacts revenues, or we have unanticipated operating cost increases like we've seen in the last couple of years, we have no margin for error. Plus, by designing rates to be, to give us a little bit of that buffer, we take that revenue and put it into our capital improvement program. So over time, it allows us to start cash-funding more capital and not being so reliant on debt to pay for our capital.
Understood, yeah, because we've got a significant amount of unfunded projects in the future that I'm imagining we're going to have to take on some debt, so.
That's right.
I appreciate you doing that. I see Councilman Carr.
Thank you. With the 11%, that's the overall increase for the entire bill to include the water, wastewater, and reclaimed?
Well, the 11% is just applicable to water and sewer. The reclaimed or irrigation right now does not have an increase applied to it. So the overall impact on the bill is a little less than the 11% when you apply the 11% to water and sewer and zero to reclaimed, so.
Okay, very good. And you're comfortable and confident in the reduction beginning in '28 to go to 5% again? I mean, you're comfortable with that today?
Based on what we see today, it's hard to say. You know, I wish I could have forecasted the impacts of the COVID pandemic and the inflation that we had seen. So absent things of that nature, new regulatory requirements that could come that we just don't have line of sight to, I mean, based on what we know today, it should be sufficient for what we've identified. But the challenge are, there's a number of things that we just can't predict in terms of the rate of inflation, new regulatory requirements, when they may hit. But for what we know today, this plan should be very solid.
Another good reason to do this every year, to make sure that we're on track.
Exactly right.
Thank you.
I don't see any more lights on. Mr. City Manager, is this something that you're going to need some sort of direction on from this body moving forward? Or is this informational?
No, well, we'll have to bring forward a rate ordinance for this to be adopted.
Sure, but I mean, just to get a consensus that this is what should be on it.
As far as the budget goes, it's what we would be planning for revenue in next year's budget. But in order to enact this, we'll have to bring forward a rate.
Okay, so maybe just a consensus on whether this is a rate that we should move forward with in that resolution?
Correct. Yes, that's what we're looking for.
Just go down the list then and see whatever. I mean, we haven't heard from at least half of us, but if you guys want to jump in, that's great. Otherwise, we'll just go down the list. Start with Councilman Carr.
Yeah, I'm in agreeance with the assessment of the expert.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Just real quick, we'll be back in August with the rate resolution for adoption, so they can go into effect on October 1.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, sir, for the presentation. Okay, next up, 4B debt overview. I'm imagining that's Mark again?
Yeah, that'll be me, just in case.
Do you think?
So, good morning again, Mayor Pro Tem, Mark Mason, Financial Services Director. So what we wanted to talk with you today is, and this is, we're not looking for any particular direction. This is more of an educational opportunity, to kind of talk about our debt overview on governmental debt only. You just had a briefing on our utilities debt. Last year was the first time we had issued debt for the stormwater system, and we'll be doing that essentially each and every new UEP that comes up in the future. So overall, as far as the stormwater system is concerned, it's really just associated with the, with the UEP in the future. The, as far as the yacht basin, which is another enterprise fund, the yacht basin will end up picking up the majority of the debt associated with the yacht club. So again, we're not really here to talk about the yacht club or financing the yacht club, but I want to talk about governmental debt. And governmental debt is everything else. Essentially, if we're doing our parks, if we're doing the issuing debt for ad valorem, ad valorem-supported debt or geo-bond debt, roads, roads, building new roads, the CRA debt, if we're issuing any CRA debt or debt by the city that is supported by the CRA, or the buildings that we build for the charter school. So we have a number of items that are out there that we're going to kind of talk about, but I really want to give you an idea of debt overview and what debt capacity for us means. So we're going to kind of go through a little bit on our ratings and our outstanding general government debt. We'll talk a little bit about our non-ad valorem debt capacity analysis and how we do that. Essentially, what I'm trying to do is kind of give you an idea of what we go through on our side to bring forward a debt plan to you in the future, when, if we need to issue debt for anything. I'm going to talk a little bit about the public service tax capacity analysis. This kind of dovetails a little bit for some of our discussion yesterday, as well as a discussion that we've had recently with regard to the charter school system. And afterwards, I'll talk a little bit about our market conditions as they exist today. And that kind of dovetails a little bit back into some of the discussion that you just heard from Andy and the rates that we currently are forecasting. So this currently is an overview of our current governmental debt. The first three items are our general obligation bonds. We've issued all three of them. There's, there's no more that, we have no more capacity to issue anymore unless we go back to the, the public. I guess I lost my, oh, there it is. Unless we go back to the public and ask for more. The special obligation, our CBNA, which is a covenant-to-budget appropriate, non-ad valorem revenues. It means that these are all the other revenues that we have available to us that we can pledge for debt or in the aggregate of all available non-ad valorem revenues, that would be the covenant-to-budget appropriate. So we have a number of items there, you know, from our Series 2012 bonds all the way up through the Series 2023 bonds, which were just issued for the building of Fire Station, I think, believe that was Fire Station 13. We also have a, an outstanding direct-supported bond. The half-cent sales tax supports that particular Series 2014 bond. And we have a couple of leases that are outstanding as well, one of which is supported by payments from the charter school system for their buses. So overall, we're, right now, we're in the double A category of our ratings. We have ratings by Moody's, we have ratings by Fitch, and we also have for our general obligation bonds, and we have Moody's and S&amp;P for ratings, as well as Fitch for ratings for our non-ad valorem debt. As you just heard, you know, for our water and sewer debt, we're at a single A or an A-plus debt rating. For our non-ad valorem revenues, we're at a double A rating, which is a, which is a good rating. And for our, for our general obligation debt, we're in the double A II or double A rated debt as well. So what that means is, is that, you know, we're issuing... we're issuing our debt at a lower cost than if we were at a lower rating, if we were in an A category rating or as far down as a triple B rated category. Our cost of issuance or our cost of debt is actually lower at the double A rating. And one of the things is, is although that we certainly do have capacity to issue debt, you know, you can also go too far to where, you know, you don't carry that double A rating anymore. At the same time, you know, the highest rating of triple A is is definitely difficult to obtain. They do change the rules about every three years about how how to maintain it or how to keep it. There are certainly Florida local governments that do have it. One of the difficulties we have is that there's also a long history or a long memory of events that occur over over 20, 30 year period. And at the rating level, they do take those things into account when they're forecasting into the future. And so one of the things that hurts us and probably will hurt us until we can demonstrate that it won't happen again, is when we took a massive hit on values in the in the in the city in 2008. That in and of itself would likely keep us from a triple A rating in the future until something similar happens again and we can demonstrate that we are not hit as bad. Kind of give you an idea of one of the criteria that they look at when it comes to ratings. So from so when we're looking at issuing debt, one of the things that, you know, we certainly take into account, you know, our ability to repay the debt, our, you know, the the capacity that we have in the system to, you know, what we see as as our as our pay down schedules and how long we're issuing the debt will certainly make a difference of where we stand with regard to our ratings. So we've been fairly stable and over the last many years, several years, and we seem to, you know, as we continue to improve over the past several years. And so one of the things that Moody's has said about us and specifically about our general obligation bonds is that, you know, certainly, we benefit from a growing economy that's been certainly driven by population growth. And we certainly have a lot more capacity with population growth for the city. So if we were to issue general obligation bonds in the future, I would tell you that, you know, we'll we'll certainly be at a lower cost of cost of issuance and a lower interest cost, just simply because of that. We're also in a very strong financial position. The it's one of the things that, you know, I'm certainly proud of every time I get to read it in our ratings. But we have a very strong financial position. And in order for us to keep our double A rating, we have to stay in that position. Although we do have above average liabilities and fixed costs, it hasn't been one of those items that has 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 taken a big hit on our on our current double A ratings. Couple of things that we did note, you know, clearly, our credit strengths, large, growing tax base, strong financial position, but, you know, we do have credit challenges. Some of those credit challenges is our overall net pension liability a little higher than some of our similarly rated cities nationwide, something that we need to keep, you know, on the horizon and something that we look at on a regular basis. And of course, we also have, you know, we're in southwest Florida. We have above average exposure to physical climate risks. So those are some of the things that we also have to be cognizant of with regard to our debt. On the non-ad valorem side, this is where the majority of our debt is 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 located at. And so our existing annual maximum annual debt service associated with our non-ad valorem debt between the next three years is about $18 million. We'll see in following 2024, we'll see a slight decrease. We have three bonds or three notes that are coming due at the in in 2024. So these will not renew going into next year. That accounts for about $1.9 million in in current debt service. But we'll be utilizing that and reapplying it towards future debt. It's one of the things that, you know, the as things come down, it opens up new capacity for you. You issue new debt in the future. When we hit 2030, in 2031, you see a massive decrease in the overall debt. This is when the Santa Barbara and the Del Prado bonds will be paid off. This accounts for about $4.3 million a year in debt service. So with that understanding, and currently, we pay for the bonds through the through the road impact fee, the actual credit that supports them is the gas taxes. And so if we saw a decrease in the overall road impact fees, or whatever it is that we're, you know, if we if we go to mobility fees, you know, the mobility fees will still have to, you know, be able to cover that debt. If it's not, then we have to go back to the gas tax. And then from there, if the gas tax isn't sufficient, then we come back to the general fund to pay the debt. Again, we're we have about six more years at this level, and then we're going to see a decrease in 2030. And of course, as you keep going out in 2040, some of those decreases you see out there, when it really drops off to really very minor debt, that's when all the charter schools have been paid off. The 2041, 2042, 2043, that's actually the debt for the the gym at the at the high school. And so all of this basically gives us an idea from a timing standpoint that for the last 10 years, we've been carrying about $18 million in in capacity of debt service in the in the system. And it's not just the general fund that pays for this. We have a number of other debt sources that actually pay for this. So with that in mind, you know, you have capacity within within the general fund, but we also have restricted revenue capacity that potentially is available to pay the debt. As an example, we have debt outstanding associated with our park system. Currently, two point little over $2.5 million a year is paid on that debt service from the park impact fees. So again, if we see a decrease in construction, if we see, you know, a material impact in the impact fees that are coming in to pay these debts, then we would have to reallocate those debts to another source. And since it's a CBNA supported debt, in other words, a covenant to budget appropriate, we have to appropriate something in order to pay those debts. So these are all the things that we take into account when we're issuing debt. So from a debt capacity analysis standpoint, currently, on an analysis based upon our annual excess non-ad valorem revenue, these are the amounts that, you know, are not spent during the course of the year that, you know, we've talked about, you know, a lot over the last several several years, that, you know, is available and to use towards future debt if that was the if that was the choice. So on average, over the last three or last four years, we've averaged about $15.2 million. Last year, although there certainly there was a big a big hit to the system because of the hurricane, when you consider those expected reimbursements back into the system, the general fund actually generated probably about $8.5 million. And so taking these numbers into account, if there was a desire to issue debt for future projects, you have capacity of something that is available to you on an annual basis. And once you've identified that, it's in the system, you know, for the term of the debt. And then you look at the next period, what is available, the next period, and what is available. These are the things that we look at when we're when we're evaluating debt. As an example, we have a $51 million project coming up for the new fleet facility. So one of the questions that was asked, you know, at the time, well, how are we going to pay for that? Okay, well, for that, fortunately, it's an internal service fund. So every one of our funds that has vehicles actually pays into that. So when we're looking at the general fund, which actually has most of the vehicles, you know, police, fire, police, and parks and recreation, as well as community development, not including the building fund, they have a that's worth most of the vehicles. So we have to plan for this coming from the general fund. And in planning for that coming from the general fund, when we actually start to build it, we look at this particular capacity availability for what we currently have, or we're also looking at in the future, what's falling off of our debt schedule on an annual basis, or we can plan for when those when those are occurring, and we can plan for the actual debt issuance and the construction of those facilities when that occurs. So we have other capacity resources, you know, and I when I talk about this, it's not that I'm advocating for it. It's it's just that, you know, I would be remiss and and if I didn't tell you that it's available for you. So we have revenue sources that have not yet been applied. We've talked about this in the past. It's the remaining 3% on our electric. We are one of the probably maybe five cities in the state of Florida that do not, you know, take advantage of the full 10%. That's neither a good thing nor a bad thing. It's just simply a statement. That 3%, you know, equates to a dollar value that's available for future improvements, and I'll go through that here shortly. The reallocation of the resources that are now available from from other projects due to new funding, this particularly is the public service tax for the charter schools. So as the LCI comes into effect, the public service tax can be redirected or reallocated to another use. And of course, the reallocation, as you've I've talked about several times, is the reallocation of debt service payment to new debt when debt is paid off. So if it's already in the system, we already understand that it's already we've been carrying that debt for some time. So when we have those debts that are, you know, a debt is being paid off, you turn around and you reallocate that to a new debt in the future because it's already sustainable and it already has been sustained in your annual budgets. So from a capacity analysis standpoint, to kind of give you an idea of what 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 a debt service means to us and what that means that we can actually borrow. And these are at today's rates. So, you know, if the rates were to come down, the dollar value actually goes up. So our capacity analysis, you know, based upon an example of any annual excesses that you had. So let's just kind of give you an example of that. So today, an additional $10 million in revenue means an additional that would generate $210 million in projects. So if you had $10 million and you wanted to apply $10 million in revenues to something, then you have you have the capacity to issue out $210 million in projects. An additional $20 million means $425 million in projects. This all assumes that a right around a 5% rate today, or sorry, the interest cost of 4.5% today at a 30 year final maturity. So it's all based upon 30 year debt. It's all based upon 4.5% annual interest cost. So although you have that capacity, the one thing that we would have to do is sit down and work with the rating agencies to understand what the impact of that that debt is and the sustainability of the revenue source that's basically paying it. And so we would work at our financial advisor, and we'd explore any of the, you know, potential rating impacts and budgetary impacts. And these are the things that we do every every single time we go out into the marketplace and we talk with the rating agencies. Their first question to us is, well, what are you going to be doing the next five years? How much additional debt do you intend on issuing in the next five years? That is all taken into account on our ability and our capacity to be able to pay the debt in the future. And again, you just heard Andy kind of talk about the exact same thing when you're talking about the utility system. You know, the utility system needs to have the rates in place and needs to have the capacity and the and the and the resources in order to maintain what I would consider to be a very complex system. And it's even worse because you can't see it because most of it's underground. So again, here we are, you know, we're looking at our current, what an example of additional debt capacity would be. We still see that we're going to, you know, see a drop off of our debt issue in the future, but at the same time, we're just simply up a little bit higher. So in 2031, a mere six years from now, you know, you would be almost in the exact same place if you had $10 million additional capacity today at $18 million a year, something that is sustainable, you know, but at same time, with the, you know, being cognizant of exactly what sources we're currently using in order to pay that debt today. So we talked a little bit about the public service tax, and I kind of wanted to walk through with you exactly what 3% means if you were to take advantage of that, and as well as the $2.6 million in annual public service tax revenues that we currently are applying towards the charter schools. So we would, you know, as as we see this fall off of the 40%, the 60%, the 80%, finally getting to the 100% of the LCI, we would recommend that over that same period of time that you reprogram those funds towards a different debt. At the same time, the city could, you know, levy the additional 3% 3% of public service tax revenues, which could provide about $5.7 million for debt service on an annual basis. So yesterday, we had a brief conversation about medians, right? And, you know, the 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 conversation, you know, revolved around putting in an assessment for $5 million a year to do medians. This is simply another revenue source that actually could be applied to the exact same thing, and everybody's paying the same same rate towards those medians. At the same time, if you wanted to do more medians, you could issue the debt with the same revenue source and get the medians done at a faster clip. Or, you know, you accumulate the funds and you are able to go out there and utilize these resources specifically for that purpose. That's just an idea. It's not it's not an abdication. It's not, you know, something that I'm suggesting you do today, but it is something for, you know, for thought as we as we look to the future about how we want to do these medians in the future. So to look at this, 2.6 million in public service taxes could fund up to $42 million in projects, and $5.7 million would fund up to about $93 million in projects. And those are exactly the same rates that we have today to kind of give you an idea of what those numbers are and what the all inclusive cost, in this particular case, the all inclusive interest cost would be on those over a 20, 25 year or 30 year basis. So to kind of give you an idea of where we are with market conditions, we are still and continue to be in an inverted yield curve. And we've been in this particular curve for probably about a good five years now. It is it is not something that many of us are necessarily happy with. But on a debt issue side, we're certainly not happy with it. On an interest earnings side, we're ecstatic with it, especially on the on the on the short term basis. So, you know, for me, it's, you know, it depends on what I'm doing is whether I'm going to be happy or sad about it. But this kind of gives you an idea of what we are, where the forecast is today, and where, you know, and where it was last year. We were certainly much lower last year, a little higher this year. And I think the forecast in the future is for the Federal Reserve dot plot actually shows that in the long term, or at least over the next two years, we would expect to see short term interest rates come down. When that will happen, it's kind of hard to say. I just saw that we added an additional 277,000 to the employee rolls. So that was an unexpected number compared to last last month. So it's inflationary pressures continued to be with us for a little while longer. So I appreciate it. I'm here for any questions. If you if there are any questions on this. Again, this was an educational thing. It wasn't a I'm not asking for you to do anything on this particular item.
Great. Thank you, Mark. Councilman, thank you.
Thank you. Mark, just a couple questions or observations that might help those that might be watching at home or that would have question. The previously, when we talked about building a bit of a buffer in the utility process of determining rates by not running so close to the wire, so to speak, on what's expected. It's things like that that actually can contribute toward helping our rating as we look at what our rates would then become for everything else. So it's strategies like that where you could say, well, you know, let's let's run a little closer to the line. Making a decision like that could then affect our rating, which then could affect the cost of debt service on everything else. Is that right?
It is. We do have a debt service coverage requirement for our our CBNA debt. I believe it's 1.2 times coverage. I think the most important thing that should come out of this is that we are above the 1.2. And what allows us to be at the 1.2 is our strong financial condition and strong financial position. The 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 amount of the reserves in the general fund that we've set aside provides for this. You spend down the reserves, we're going to be in a different position, and those comments will, you know, could change from a strong financial And those comments will, you know, could change from a strong financial position to a moderate or a weak financial position.
Yeah, and that was my next note is that many times when a reserve number is seen and an expected expense is coming, the cash-minded person would say, well, let's just take the money from the reserves and pay for it. Unfortunately, that then affects other things that you don't have the money to pay for and what it will then cost to acquire the funds to make that happen. So having that healthy reserve is not being gluttonous, so to speak. But instead, it's actually helping the overall condition of our financial strength when we look for debt service.
In fact, when, you know, when we, after Ian, I seem to recall Councilmember Hayden asking, how much of the general fund are we going to have to use to pay for this? And at the time, we didn't really have a good answer. But, you know, as our financial statements came out last year, we spent down about $40, $45 million worth of our reserves in order to cover the cost of the recovery. With the clear understanding that that $45 million would likely be recovered within a year, year and a half. A couple of things that happened with the state. We got, this $51 million loan that came down, you know, certainly supported us with the clear understanding that we're going to have the money a little bit sooner than, you know, waiting for FEMA to finally get around to reimbursing us. But we had conversations with the rating agencies following that. What their question is, is, well, how much are you getting back? Are you going to be able to recover this? And the answer is yes. And, you know, then, you know, at this point, based upon the actions of the state, based upon a couple of things, you know, our out-of-pocket costs for the majority of the expenses with the hurricane are going to be nothing, are zero. Which is usually, it's usually around 5% or as high as 12.5%. And so, again, having that cushion, having that, those reserves in place, that supports our position. It's basically doing the exact same coverage test that you just talked about for the utility system in this particular circumstance.
Great, thanks. And one last thing. Strategically, one of the things that you mentioned as it relates to when our debt service is called or paid off, there was talk of applying that, what was already allocated for that debt service, applying that to additional debt service that is there. And kind of to make an analogy is, you know, and part of that, and you can confirm this, which would help all those listening, I think, is that it helps level off that, if you will, the revenue source and the availability money. And what I make analogy to is, is that when the car gets paid off, when that car loan gets paid off, instead of thinking that's manna from heaven and now I've got that additional $400 a month to do whatever with, well, then all of a sudden, when the new car is needed and you've got to apply that new $500 a month payment to the budget, it hurts. And so to continue the payment stream, if you will, and apply it to additional debt to bring that debt down, kind of helps level off that expense stream as we look at where do we get the additional dollars for additional things? Is that, am I on the right track?
The one thing that, because of the governmental debt, by its very nature, doesn't allow us to just simply pay it off or pay it down unless we issue the debt with that clear understanding, in which case we'd have a much higher interest cost. So in this circumstance, when I talk about reallocating, if I've got $1.5 million that is no longer needed to pay debt A, this now allows me to issue debt B and continue utilizing that $1.5 million for a different debt. That's what that really, that's kind of like what I'm talking about. We know we have things to do in the future. We try to time out sometimes the debt issues to reflect that this debt is falling off. Let's reapply it over here. And so that's basically what I'm talking about.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, that $500 hurts even more, especially when you reallocate that 400 somewhere else. You know, and so that's something to kind of be mindful of. I guess one thing for me, I don't see any lights on, Mark, is a lot of this is projections, well, not even necessarily projections, but just figures based on a reallocation of that PST from the charter school. And my understanding for those discussions is that that needs to, that's only through modification of the lease?
Yes, through modification in the lease.
To go further, I think that lease can only be modified by mutual consent.
Correct.
And so deviating a little bit off track, but it would be helpful to lock this in so that we can make these legitimate projections for these revenues is, what's the next step for getting that sorted out?
We'll be sitting down with the charter school authority and the city attorney's office and write up the terms of the lease and the timing of when these things will start to fall off.
Is that something that we should be doing now, Mr. City Manager?
We would like to bring it back before the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah, I'd love to be able to get that locked in one way or another so that we were able to, you know, better plan for the future with regards to what we might be able to do with that. So, thank you, sir. Anyone else?
All right, great. The third and final item I have for today for C, the budget overview.
Okay, that's me again. All right, so this is essentially to kind of give you an update of where we are, what we've seen from the June 1 numbers and the next steps that come after that. So just as a reminder, everybody, we have a financial policy to have a structurally balanced budget. Essentially, again, as a reminder to everyone that we commit to, and when I say we, that's all of us, to commit to and develop and maintain a structurally balanced budget whereby the current revenues will cover the current and equal the current expenditures. And so we believe that, as we've done in the past, that will in fact be part of the, that will be done this current year. So the current calendar, we're in the current calendar with the budget workshop at City Council on June 6th, June 7th. The milestone that was just reached is when we received the preliminary property appraiser's value for the city of Cape Coral. And our next milestone will be when we receive the certified taxable value from the property appraiser. The preliminary property values are designed for planning purposes, kind of give you an idea where we stand. In general, we don't see any massive seismic shifts in the dollar value of the, or the property values from June 1 to July 1. Although the property appraiser has warned us that with the number of properties that were damaged or destroyed and the work that they've been putting into it, we may see, you know, maybe larger changes than what we've seen in the past. So I just want you to be aware of that. I don't know whether that's up, down, or otherwise. But we're, at this point, the city of Cape Coral had the largest value change, taxable value change within the county. So I would expect that it's not, probably not going to be too material of a change. So we'll be, our next milestone following that is on July 18th, 19th, the city manager will be distributing his proposed budget to the city council. We'll be holding a town hall meeting on July 25th. And then we'll be back with the city council on August 6th, August 13th, and August 20th for budget workshops with either the 13th and the 20th, whether they're necessary or whether we will need them or not. Then we'll be back and with the public hearings, right now, they're scheduled for September 12th and September 26th. So not to impact or to have an issue with the school district or the county. So our budget process is pretty simple. It needs to balance. That's as simple as it can get. Our expenditures need to balance to our revenues. There's a whole host of things that goes into that. The, you know, certainly we want to make sure that we're within our strategic plan, that we're meeting the expectations of the city council and meeting the expectations of the public. Revenue-wise, our proposed millage rate is 5.3694. The established fire service assessment at 70% of cost recovery has remained. We are reviewing charges for services, changes associated with those, with parks. They have the majority of them. We're doing a building permit analysis as well. And of course, the review of impact fees. Now that we had our discussion yesterday with regard to parks, the first four parks that were included in the presentation, I want to make sure that we're comfortable with putting those into the five-year CIP. This will help us in the analysis for the impact fees. Overall, we saw the budget from what we've projected and what we're expecting. We went from fiscal year '24 to '25 at about $6 million, $7 million. That was a 6.5% increase. The preliminary taxable value for June 1 versus the final taxable value that was issued in October of last year, right now, we're looking at a 10.26% adjustment. So slightly higher than what we originally forecasted. The, right now, we're looking at about an additional $8 million or $7.5 million from what we originally had planned. This gives you an idea of our major revenue sources, where we are with many of those revenue sources, some of the things that are important to be mindful of. To the best of my knowledge, the governor has not yet signed the budget. So he has not, so the state's budget is not out yet. That puts a strain on the folks up at the, at the state for forecasting out revenues for communication services tax, the fuel taxes, revenue sharing program, things like that. So we don't expect those actual results until generally late July or early August. So from a timing standpoint, we also don't see material changes from what we forecast. But it's important to understand that, you know, when you're talking about a $25, $30 million, if there's a, you know, a change of 10%, then, you know, that will have an impact on our forecasted budget. Staffing-wise, administration is looking at, currently proposing staffing changes of about 53 additional staff. This is to meet our current needs analysis that we've, that all departments have prepared. It also meets some planned changes such as stormwater. We had brought forth a stormwater fee study to you to kind of show you what we have. And this continues that same fee study adds that we've already projected. We've projected solid waste inspectors in order to have one inspector for each quadrant of the city. So we're bringing on the two for, this is the final year of that transition. For police, at this point, these are the proposed positions. Fire has a number of proposed positions. We're bringing on a new rescue unit. This is part of the plan that we've identified that we need to bring in one rescue unit, I think, per year for at least the next several years. City attorney is requesting six positions and the city auditor is requesting two for a total of 61 positions. From the asset management program summaries, we have our capital improvement program. The bulk of the capital improvement program is within the utility system, which shouldn't be a surprise. But we also have a number of other items that are outstanding. We have Fire Station 10, which is budgeted to at least begin in 2025. We also have the fleet facilities as well as the facility or our property management building to be constructed up at the North Cape Government Complex. These are just some of the projects that are out there. The one that you don't see in here is because we don't have a, we don't have a final estimate for the yacht club. But as soon as we do, that will be added into the system as well. And future meetings, again, we will be back before you in July to set the preliminary millage rate. That will be at the July 25th meeting, I believe, or July 24th, sorry, July 24th. City clerk will just correct me in about two seconds. So we'll be back on July 24th for the preliminary millage rates and as well as the initial rates for assessments. August 8th, July 25th, again, we'll be out here for the town hall. August 8th, 15th, and 22nd are for the scheduled budget workshops. And, yep, the city manager wants to say something.
Mark, I know the mayor's not here today, but can you clarify? There was a statement made yesterday about replacement generators. Are they in the budget?
Oh, yes. They're not unfunded. They are in the proposed budget to replace the generators. It's the two fire stations that we've identified. I believe we have a generator replacement plan for our fire stations. We may not have had one five years ago, but we certainly have worked very hard to get one up now. Thank you.
All right, thank you all. I'm just opening up for discussion on anything related to the last presentation. I did have one quick question, though. Mark or Mr. City Manager relating to the slide with the FTEs, the ads in the next cycle, staffing. There we go. So I see here, I'm sure everyone is aware, but we've got, it was intro to the last meeting, we've got apparently a new department that's coming online. Emergency Management, Department of Emergency Management and Resilience, which is set for hearing on July 17th. So is that not forecasted in here with regards to any potential add-ons for FTEs or is it in here?
I have, to accomplish that, I'm using some vacant positions and reorganizing existing FTEs to create that department. So there's no request for any additional FTEs.
Got it. Perfect. Thank you. Okay, Councilman Stanky.
Thanks. My question also related to that same slide. Are these requests by the department heads, have they already been through discussion with the city manager's office? And if there are any adjustments to the ask, those adjustments are reflected in these numbers that we see here? And this is something that's already supported through the city manager's office?
They are. And just as a reminder, this is still preliminary.
Correct.
Okay. We just wanted to give you an idea of where we stood today.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Carr.
Thank you. Again, as part of the staffing study, the one question was answered. The city manager's already reviewed these numbers. You're going to be distributing your requested budget on the 18th of July, it says, Mike? Okay. Do you expect it to be dramatically different than what's been presented today or just additional information with it?
As additional, as we finalize the state revenues and we get the final assessed value, you know, we'll have some things that may be sitting, you know, as a thumbs up or thumbs down. I did meet with you all individually. So now I need to go back and meet with finance on what, you know, to align what all the individual, you know, key elements that you all would like to see to make sure we're all working together to build the budget that everybody's comfortable with.
Of the 61 FTEs that are being sought after, are they all general fund?
No.
No. The stormwater ones come out of the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, which were all supported by the rate study that was performed. Utilities is the Water and Sewer. Solid Waste is the Solid Waste Fund. And then a couple of those develop, you know, have multiple revenue sources like property management and fleet, ITS, all those are supported by all the other enterprise funds. So the only ones that are bona fide general fund are?
We can separate these out in a few years so you'll know what they are. But the bona fide general fund ones are police, parks and recreation, the development services, research specialist.
City attorney.
City attorney and the city auditor.
Yeah, I think for me, I'd like to know the, kind of the numbers related to the, you know, the impact on the general fund number with regard to the positions requested. And then I can ask questions about some more detail later about each area. But I was curious about that. And that's all I had. Thank you.
Councilman Hayden.
Mike, I was thinking back to last year's budget. I think there was about $17 million worth of requests from different departments last year that you weren't able to approve. Were those absorbed throughout this fiscal year or will those asks again pop up for this year's budget? Or where does that stand?
If the department was able to find a way to fund any of the items that were not approved in the budget, those would have come through in a budget amendment. But if not, they have to resubmit those requests and then reprioritize based on the organizational shifts this year. So each year, anything that doesn't get funded will go into... that doesn't get funded will go into basically another funding request the following year, and then it, it gets trued up with the priorities of the organization.
For me, just one last follow-up to the previous question I had, and you might be covering it in that July 17th, and if so, you can just say that, but can you explain just from my education how you're, you're planning on changing around FTEs to fill, backfill a new director's position? How does that process work? Because I imagine that's significantly higher expense than a traditional staffing from a salary perspective. So how are you able to not request a new FTE, but then?
We, there, there are, the positions exist already, and they're already fully funded.
Even if you create a new department?
Yeah, it's a, it's a, like a reorganization. It's like, like if you were going to spin off a new office and you just took staff from one department or one office and another and combined them to, to, to start up the new office.
And then, and no change in salary would need to be reflected in this portion of the slide, I guess. Is the existing position going to remain the same, the same level, pay level and pay grade and scale?
It might be less.
Okay. I guess that was what my question was related to. Thank you. I don't see any other lights on. I guess if nobody else wants to speak on this topic, I'll go ahead and move forward. The next item on the agenda is item five, citizens' input time. Maximum of 60 minutes is set for input time of citizens on matters concerning the city government. Three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name for the record.
Good morning, Mayor Protem and Council. My name is Joe Kilrain, 20-year resident living in District 5. My, my background has been 40 years with Olin Corporation, Oxonel Petroleum, in, in that industry. I could write a treatise in water quality, geostructure, and cost of materials, but just a couple of quick points, because it's very difficult to write a treatise in, in three minutes or deliver it. But, but primarily, I'd like to echo Mr., and reinforce the StanTech gentleman's point about the chemicals. Petrochemicals, I've done everything from pulling minor chemicals out of the ground from exploration standpoint to fine chemicals, all kinds of plastics and polymers. The trend in, in petrochemicals is going to be nothing but up, and I think that probably the, the urgency he's raising with respect to that price control, it's between the environmental, environmental legislations can be placed upon it, and then basic raw material sources because of the availability of petrochemicals, it's only going to get higher. It's going to continue to accelerate. The second point I'd like to make is on the science and the technology or our water challenge. Water is the basic greatest challenge this Cape faces, and, and it's twofold, because it's going to kill industry, and industry has been the driver to produce revenue here. It's been our primary industry in the city. It's the primary industry in the county. That is the cash cow for all of our living expenses. Every dollar spent delivers $7 out there. The key to that is though, is going to have a long-range plan and starting those actual activities today that are going in that long, long-range plan. We already had identified accelerating, reordering the UEP system. That has to be done and reported on frequently. I, I look to you guys to make it your oversight and, and just making sure to maintain on, to get that on the council agenda at some frequency. I don't know if it's weekly or monthly, but you ought to be looking at that monthly. And also, the same applies to the recycle plant in the north. The third area I, I'd like to then hit upon is that there is science out there that may be able to help us in those areas. First of all, rain and, and a change in climate isn't going to help us very much. We can wish for that, but it's not going to help us, and I said this before. The key things are getting those two things in place, but there may be, being familiar with geostructures, and again, every geostructure is different, and it's really unusual down here in Florida, and what we're faced with, it's probably more challenging geostructure for the aquifer. But there are other potential sources for water. We're already doing deep injection well testing right now to be able to take care of that high saline water waste source that we have to deep well inject. And if we're going to do that, it's, it's very wise for us to look at doing some deep well exploration or seismic, if I could just have one more minute, to investigate other potential water sources that might be at other levels up in that mid Hawthorne range. That money invested now could really deliver things in the, in the future. The last point is that from an investment standpoint, I, I would like to take advantage of Mr. Biden's Escalation or Inflation Reduction Act, AKA Environmental. There's a whole bunch of money out there for climate adaptation. The Keys have, have done it. They've looked at adaptation and sea level. We can coach our, what is now, because of the, the well and the water shortage accelerated as a result of our growth, also there's a climate factor in that. I think that we should be taking a deep dive.
Let's finish up your thought, please.
And looking at those things that comply, that new source of funding that feeds our debt capacity. Look at those potential federal funds that are available. Please get with Congressman Byron Donalds on that. Sit in his office, talk to him about it, and drive that one home. That's a great potential. Thank you for the extra time. I apologize for overrunning.
I guess I get five minutes now, right? Just kidding. Tom Shadrack, a couple of comments on today's charts. The water and sewer, I would have liked to have seen a comparison of our total cost to the other cities. All those charts did was show what their increases are, or what our planned increase is. How do we compare to the overall water and sewer and irrigation costs to those other cities? That wasn't presented today. We could be having the highest rates overall, and we don't know. It just wasn't on chart. We could be great. We could have the cheapest, but that chart didn't show us anything about how we compare it to other cities in total water, sewer, and irrigation costs. There's a lot of communities that they still get a lot of their irrigation from wells, like Pana Gorda. Most people do houses. They dig a well and have city water. They don't even use irrigation from the city. So you need to have apples to apples, and we need to see what our total cost is. So if we could get that chart, that would be great. And also a history of the all-in DSC rate for the debt comparison. It'd be nice to see how we've done over time. If we're at 1.06 now, close to the 1.0, what have we done in the past five years? It'd be good to see that chart. Okay, on the debt, Mr. Mason did a good job telling you, if we have a increase in revenue, we can create 21 times of that in debt, but you can also do it by the opposite way. Reduce expenses will produce the same amount of debt availability. As an example, you're proposing 61 new heads. If you didn't hire those people, you'd be able to create $125 million in debt and pay for the yacht club, just by not hiring these 61 people this year. That's an example, a little probably an exaggeration, but if you count $100,000 per person with overheads, rates, medical, it's about $100,000 a person, probably minimum. 60 people, $6 million a year savings, 6 million times 21, that you can produce debt, that's $125 million in debt, being able to create it by not hiring people. A couple of the details, solid waste, two more people. Pretty soon, we'll have more people watching Waste Bro than doing Waste Bro. That's kind of ridiculous. I think you're doubling the attorney's staffs of six. Not sure why that's needed. Now, in January, you all met and talked about the millage rate, and I made a big point. We're producing $8 million or $6 million or more dollars due to property taxes just from growth that was proposed. That was $141 million. You've now just gave the city manager a blessing to go up to the last year's millage rate, which is an increase of another $7 million. You should be highlighting, stick to the 141, no more than that when you propose in July, but you didn't do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' input? Seeing none, citizens' input is now closed. Is there any council discussion on citizens' input? I see Councilman Welsh.
Yeah, just to clear up, Mike, when we get the, the final numbers, we'll have a rollback rate option to vote on for the budget. We're not approving this right now, is keeping that millage rate, correct?
You have a option to vote on any millage rate all the way up until the final budget here.
But we'll, Mark, we'll see those two options of what the rollback is, plus what the current proposed is. Okay. I just wanted to make that clear, that it's not that we gave you the go-ahead. We're just letting you build the budget around this, and we will see that rollback rate option before we vote on it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Carr.
Thank you. I was just trying to go back to the slide. I thought the slide did indicate our overall costs associated in relation to other jurisdictions, didn't it? I mean...
Slide 138.
Okay, let me just pull that up myself, make sure I didn't, the way Mr. Shadrack represented it, wasn't there, but I, I thought it was there. Was it the overall cost? Can we pull that up? 138, is that the number?
143 is the one that has the increase in the current cost.
Give me, I apologize. I was just trying to find it here in the list. I just want to look at it, because the way I look at it, I looked at it differently.
138 is an example of current compared to other jurisdictions, and 143 is what it would look like with it could be proposed change.
And those are the overall bills for the other jurisdictions that I'm seeing in this chart, correct? Let's let the staff member answer, Mr. Shadrack, if we could.
Went too far.
143, I'm looking at it. Slide number 143.
All right, these are the rates. The rates are designed to recover the cost.
Correct.
So...
But the, I guess the question that I have and the representation, the representation that was made was, these numbers, like for instance, Fort Myers on this chart, it shows over $300 bill, and that includes all of the costs of their water, correct?
Correct.
And our cost in the, in the same chart is little over $100 with the proposed increase. These are the total dollars for each of the jurisdiction's water bill costs.
Correct.
Water, wastewater, irrigation, reclaim bills, whichever is applicable to each jurisdiction on this chart.
Correct.
Okay, so, Mr. Shadrack, I think that maybe you didn't look at it correctly based on what I'm looking at. I just want to... No, no, that's the Fort Myers bill. On this chart, it's representing that Cape Coral's current bills, and I'm looking at the, this doesn't give a specific number, a little over 100, and it's going to go up by $10.56 a month with the proposed increase, based on the presentation. And all the other jurisdictions above us, when you follow the, the chart to the right, it indicates the total bill for each of those jurisdictions, not an increase. That's just their current bills. That's a monthly bill, correct. So we're significantly less, is what this chart is showing, than all the other jurisdictions in our general area. So, anyway, that's just for clarification, myself in particular, but thank you.
Mr. Stanky.
You already got me.
Councilman Cosden.
I was going to say the same thing.
Okay. I'm seeing no more further discussion on citizens' input. We'll move forward to item six, time and place of future meetings. Item eight, the special meeting of the Cape Coral City Council is scheduled for Monday, June 17th, 2024, beginning at 9:00 AM in council chambers. A regular meeting of the Cape Coral City Council is scheduled for Wednesday, July 17th, 2024, beginning at 4:30 PM in council chambers. Before we make a motion to adjourn, I just want to thank the city manager and all the department heads and staff that put their time and effort into this. The information was incredibly valuable. I look forward to continuing forward with this process. That being said, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Make adjourned.